I'm going to call the meeting to order. It is 7 o'clock. Want to welcome everybody here tonight. We have a declaration of a quorum. There are six members present. Welcome to this meeting of the College Station Independent School District Board of Trustees. We were elected at large to represent the interests of our community and our state in educating our students. Our mission for our students in this district is success each life, each day, each hour. We adhere to all pertinent laws, policies, and procedures in posting agendas and conducting our meetings. The detailed agenda information was made available to us at least 72 hours in advance, and we have all come to this meeting informed and prepared. We have just completed a workshop meeting where we heard reports and discussed much of the information needed to make decisions in either this meeting or in upcoming meetings. This is a meeting of seven trustees in a public setting rather than a public meeting. As such, public comment is included on the agenda at a specific time and requires us to listen rather than take action, so to abide by the Open Meetings Act. We are pleased that you have taken the time this evening to join us. We are very proud of this school district, and we thank you for your interest in and support of our students. Mr. Martindale.
Mr. Schaefer, board members. We'll start this board meeting like we do all others with our student-led pledges and a moment of silence. So at this time, I would like to ask Brittany Kane, Assistant Principal at Pecan Trail, and Ms. Julie Mishler, Principal of Wellburn Middle School, to come forward and introduce our students.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I am Julia Mishler, the principal at Wellburn Middle School, and I have two scholars with us here tonight to talk to you about what house they're in and what they do here at Wellburn Middle School. And you might be thinking, Ms. Mishler, what is a house? Well, if you're familiar with Harry Potter or Ron Clark Academy, we have established six houses on our campus this year to really identify the six characteristics and qualities that we want our Warhawks to embody, and each of those qualities is tied up to each one of the houses. So we have accountability, compassion, courage, integrity, involvement, and resilience. I am in the Orange House, the House of Resilience, and I'm going to let Mr. Josh Gutierrez and Ms. Jaden Deverna tell you what houses they're in.
My name is Josh Gutierrez, and I go to Wellburn Middle School. I am currently in eighth grade, and I serve as the Speaker of the House, which means that I am the scholar representative of all six houses combined. The specific house that I am in is the House of Coeptus, the Red House, the House of Courage. Yeah, we're doing, yeah. So, and my favorite thing about the house system is how it does so well to provide about an elevation of school spirit in our house and also to give our scholars a sense of very light, totally, and very friendly, totally, competition. So, yeah, our house teams have, that kind of compete with each other, and by the end of the year, whoever gets the most house points wins. So, it's very awesome.
My name is Jaden Deverna, and at Wellburn Middle School, I serve as the president of our National Junior Honor Society. My house is Odysia, the House of Compassion, and my favorite thing about our house systems is how I get the chance to interact with students that I normally wouldn't get the chance to meet. And at WMS, I'm also involved in volleyball, cross-country, basketball, track, and FCA. Thank you.
Good evening. So, we have Kayden Monk from Pecan Trail. He enjoys playing basketball and football, which is what he aspires to do when he goes to Wellburn next year. He is a part of our Avid program, and he is never afraid to stand up for those who cannot stand up for themselves. That's what we love most about him. And then we have Ms. Maya Daly. She also loves basketball. She is currently playing for the City of College Station. She is another member of our Avid program, and we're happy that they're here tonight.
May all people please rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now for the Texas pledge. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Now for the moment of silence.
Thank you, Ms. Mishler, Ms. Kane. We do have several student and staff recognitions. Mr. Glenn Wickel is going to assist us with those. When he calls your name, student or staff member, if you'll come forward and get your certificate from Ms. Horn, please shake board members' hands. Mr. Glenn Wickel?
Thank you, Mr. Martindale. I will read a little bit about each of these groups and about their accomplishments before I call their names and have them come forward. First, we're going to start with All-State Band and All-State Choir selections. A total of seven musicians from A&amp;M Consolidated High School and College Station High School were recently selected to perform with the Texas Music Educators Association All-State Band or Choir. High school students selected to perform in the All-State Concerts have competed through auditions to qualify at the state level. All-State is the highest honor a Texas music student can receive. Exactly 1,795 students are selected through a process that began with more than 66,800 students from around the state, and they're vying for this honor to perform in one of 15 ensembles in band, orchestra, and/or choir. Only the top 2.6% of musicians who initially audition become All-State musicians, so this is quite an honor. As I call your name, please come forward to receive your certificate of recognition. First, All-State Band, Ricky Ariano. For the second consecutive year, I believe, Emily Downey. We'd also like to call forward their respective band directors. From A&amp;M Consolidated High School, Mr. Steve Fry. And from College Station High School, Mr. John Seal. If there are any other of our band directors from around the district out in the audience, would you guys please stand up so we can recognize you as well? I know it takes more than just those two guys. Thank you all. Okay, now, All-State Choir, Lauren Gamolka. The choir directors for the two respective high schools. From A&amp;M Consolidated High School, Ms. Emily Ramos. And Ms. Kirby Etheridge. I don't believe Ms. Etheridge is here tonight. All right. We're going to move on to our next category, which is Congressional Debate. For the third year in a row, an A&amp;M Consolidated High School student has earned the title of State Champion in the 5A University Interscholastic League Congressional Debate Competition. CONSOL debater Celine Choi earned the state title while Alan Zhang placed third, solidifying A&amp;M Consolidated's recent domination in the 5A ranks. Zhang was also a state semifinalist in last year's contest. Again, it's the third consecutive state championship for a CONSOL student. As in '19 and '18, Abed Ravzey, who recently graduated, won the state titles. Choi and Zhang competed as two of the top 51 5A Congressional Debate students in Texas. After a preliminary round, the top 16 advanced to the finals, which was actually held inside the Capitol Building in Austin. Congressional debate is an individual contest in a large group setting. It models the legislative process of democracy, specifically the United States Congress. Within this mock Legislative Assembly competition, contestants draft legislation submitted to the tournament, and they research the docket of bills and resolutions dealing with real-world social and political policies prior to the contest to prepare their speeches. As I call your name, please come forward to receive your certificate of recognition. First, 5A State Congressional Debate Champion, Celine Choi. And the 5A Congressional Debate third-place winner, Mr. Alan Zhang. I'd also like to call forward Mr. Brian Alford, the A&amp;M Consolidated High School Debate Coach. Also like to say, if you are a parent or guardian of any of these students, we know all this student success is not possible without you. Would you please stand and be recognized? Thank you so much. Mr. Martindale, that concludes the recognition portion of our meeting.
Thank you. Please be seated. We will move to Item C3, Recognize Artwork Provided by Pebble Creek Elementary, Riverbend Elementary, Pecan Trail Intermediate, College Station Middle School, and Wellburn Middle School. That's in the back. Great job. Thank you very much. Item D, Consent Agenda Items. Tonight's consent agenda items are G, H3, H4, J3, J4, and J5. Would anybody like to have any of those items removed from the consent agenda?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
My second.
All in paper, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 6-0. Item E1, Board Directions and Reports/Announcements, Superintendent Reports and Announcements. Does anybody have any board reports they'd like to announce or share with us?
I've got one. In fact, the Education Foundation Board met today. It was an event-filled hour, but, you know, a lot of it was to debrief on 50 Men Who Can Cook from a week and a half ago or so, and the final numbers are astonishing. And before I pass those on, kudos to our fellow trustee, Mr. Horak, who is the co-chair of the committee. Unbelievable job. You and your crew, led by, of course, Teresa, did an incredible job. They raised over $250,000. Attendance was up to almost 1,650 or so, right around there. I think it was 1,642.
Yeah, I think in the door, ticket-wise, was 1,600, and then when you have all your cooks and everything, you're up over 2,000, which is the highest we've ever had.
Amazing, though. And again, it's such a highlight of the year, and it was once again. So, kudos to you and Teresa and your team. Incredible job. What a blessing to this district and the students and the teachers.
Ms. Benden, could you please stand? I think we all want to give you a pause. I mean, this is a big effort, and we appreciate your hard work.
But also, they do a lot more than just that. And just in case anyone, you know, knows a senior, the deadline for scholarships from the Education Foundation is March 1st, so it's coming up here quickly. There are many that are in process right now, but if you know a senior who could benefit from this, March 1st is the deadline, and just go to givetokids.org. But anyone, there were...
I'd like to report on DIC. It was actually my first meeting to be able to attend, and Ms. Green and I were able to attend that. Kind of overwhelming for me, I'm not going to lie. I think Dr. Trammell can understand where I was just a little blown away with everything because we had to get up and walk around and look at all the goals that they have set with objectives under those goals and everything. So, pretty neat to see everything that's being covered just in that committee, from curriculum to hiring and retention, to specific training, and then obviously anything with CTE and technology. So, thoroughly enjoyed getting to, I guess, improve my knowledge of really what's going on with that. So, happy to report, we're moving forward and excited about that.
I'll report on Head Start Policy Council. We met last week. Always just a fun hour for me because it's such a great group of interested and engaged parents and community members. I guess I'll give you some highlights. The, I mean, the main, I think, business item that they voted on was that baseline grant that we just approved in our consent agenda. So, that's off and running, just kind of that checkpoint along the way. The numbers is that we are fully enrolled, both for the Head Start and early Head Start, you know, 221 for Head Start, 70 for early Head Start, and have, I think, 60 on the waitlist, so that, you know, the waitlist is there. And that pre-K numbers also just keep edging up a little bit. And then I guess some of the exciting things they talked about, they always talk about all the fun activities that they're doing, both with the zero-to-three groups, where they bring playgroups and other things together, but also on the campuses. They're excited about the soccer league that's about to start up. If any of you had soccer players when they're, you know, four and five years old, that's probably going to be pretty, pretty interesting. And then the other, I think, neat thing, I don't have the numbers on this, but they do 100% vision and hearing screening on all the kids. And, I mean, they really talked about how they uncover some issues that then they can get these kids to the doctors and have them dealt with, you know, kids who need glasses, and so they get them glasses, kids that, you know, have ear infections, they get them taken care of, or kids that need hearing aids, even as far as that. And they can, you know, intervene with those issues early so that, you know, these kids can be not dealing with health problems, but, you know, learning instead. So, always lots of good stuff. That's it.
We will, at this point, would like to have the interim superintendent give us his report.
Thank you, Mr. Schaefer. I thought you were going to skip over me and go to the next agenda item, so, no, I just, I want to echo what Mr. Nugent said earlier and our appreciation for the work of Education Foundation, not only of the 50 Men Who Can Cook event, but the work you do throughout the course of the year and all the support you provide to the district. So, thank you, Ms. Benden, and thank you to all the members of the Education Foundation. We greatly appreciate it. That was an absolutely wonderful event, and it gets bigger and better every year. So, I don't know how y'all continue to approve. It's 13 years now, correct? So, thank you very much for your time and effort on that item. We have a lot going on. It's an extremely busy time of the year here in the spring, a lot of student success. There were a couple that I did want to mention, though, that occurred since the last board meeting. I did want to pass along my kudos to our fine arts departments, in particular at Pecan Trail, CONSOL, and CSHS for the productions, the student musical productions that they put on over the last, the course of the last three weeks. It takes a lot of kiddos, a lot of effort from our sponsors and our directors, and it never ceases to amaze me, the talent that we have in our district, as well as the work ethic and the commitment of our faculty and staff. So, Mr. Eeks, please pass it along to all of our folks. We, they do a wonderful job. Additionally, I want to mention to the board, we are starting up some of the planning, staffing, and budgeting components for next year. Yes, it's only February, but we do begin that process about this time of the year, where we begin to distribute department and district our campus budgets for folks to start reviewing and submit back in March. So, at the March meeting, we'll be coming forward with our initial financial runs for next school year, and we'll work through those in the upcoming months to be prepared for August. With that said, early projections from our demographer for next year, we're anticipating a growth of 2.7% overall on our enrollment. So, we'll plan for that accordingly through the process. And the most important announcement of all is spring break is March 9th through 13th, Mr. Schaefer. But with that being said, a reminder to Executive Committee, that means we need to get together and pencil down a date to get ready for the, prepare the agenda for the March meeting before everyone heads out on spring break. And that, Mr. Schaefer, includes interim superintendent's report.
Okay. We appreciate that, and I think we're looking forward to six months of the budget process, which is also very, very important.
It's very exciting to me, Mr. Schaefer.
Item F, Hearing of Citizens. All right, we will move to Item H1, Receive a Report on the CSISD's Gifted and Talented Program. Mr. Martindale.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Schaefer, board members. This is part of our regular board meeting monthly reports, so this is report-only item, no actions necessary. And we have Dr. Marla Ramirez here to provide us a report on our gifted and talented program this evening. Dr. Ramirez?
Thank you, Mr. Schaefer, Mr. Martindale, members of the board. I'm here to share with you a little bit of information, a review on our gifted and talented program for CSISD. So, we will be discussing the definition of our program, program description, staffing, budget, major goals and activities, our performance data, and some needs and challenges. So, to start off with our definition, in CSISD, we define a gifted student as one who performs at a remarkably high level of accomplishment when compared to their age peers. So, we're talking about experience, environment. They have to exhibit that high-performance capacity for either leadership or excels in a specific academic field. All students enrolled in CSISD have equal access to be identified under this definition, and we do serve kids in kindergarten, starting in March, so we are in that process right now. So, we don't have any currently identified, but they will be soon, by March 1st through 12th grade. So, we do have K through 12 gifted students. Again, our program does serve and assess students K through 12. We currently have 1,635 students identified as gifted students in CSISD, and that is 11.6% of our student population. So, to staff this program, we currently use classroom teachers. So, K through 12, we're using classroom teachers. All of our classroom teachers have the 30 hours of Level 1 GT training, which helps them understand the gifted learner. So, K through 12, classroom teachers, but then in K6, we do have 13 full-time enrichment specialists. So, the enrichment specialists are specific positions on those campuses that will do some pull-out with students. Seventh and eighth grade, we also have a GT STEM teacher that teaches one GT STEM course, and only students identified GT are in that specific course. We do have non-GT STEM courses, so we have both, but we do have a designated GT STEM course, seventh and eighth grade. Now, if we look at our budget, there's something a little different this year, if you notice. Last year, we had a state allotment. We, the state told us that we had to use at least $417,254 for GT, but our total budget was way above that. It was actually $676,093. So, we've always budgeted a little bit above the state allotment, but if you notice, this year, there is no state-specific allotment. So, with the passage of House Bill 3, the gifted and talented state allotment was removed from the state funding to districts. However, we're still required to have a GT program. So, they did provide us a formula that they felt we could use. So, if we used their formula, we would have to budget at least $486,811 for GT. But if you notice, we actually did budget $784,597, which is well above what their recommend, recommendation is, so that we can actually fund the program at an appropriate level. So, this is something new with House Bill 3, where there is no designated GT allotment anymore, so. So, our major goal is to provide planned, purposeful educational opportunities that allow our students the optimal academic creative and personal growth. So, what we're trying to do is make sure that our gifted and talented students, our gifted learners, are reaching their individual potential. So, we do set bars for them, and we want them to meet those potentials. So, our major activities in our GT program is our annual parent informational meeting. We hold that in December, where we talk about our referral process. During that, after that process, then we start our identification. So, the first identification that occurs is for our kindergarteners. So, between December and January, we accept referrals for our kindergarteners, and then we go through the identification process, and they will begin services by March 1st. So, in the next week and a half, we will have those kids identified, coded in our PEAM system, and they'll start receiving services from our enrichment specialists. Then, our first through 12th grade referral process is between February and April-ish is kind of our timeline, so we have to identify them by April or May. We don't have a set date like we do for kindergarten, but our goal is to get them identified by April, May, and they start services the following school year. Now, how we identify our students, we have four measures. The first one is an academic or achievement measure, which this year, we're using our MAP Growth for K through 8. It makes sense. We're giving them that academic measure already several times a year. So, instead of giving another academic test, which we used to give the Iowa, we are using MAP this year. But 9th through 12th, we are still using Iowa because we're not using MAP at those grades at this time. Then, our cognitive ability measure is the COGAT exam, and then we also include a parent questionnaire and a teacher rating scale. So, we take all four of those measures, and we put them into a matrix, and then that's how we determine who qualifies for GT services. Now, our services for this year, we had to define at a district level how we're actually serving students. This is another House Bill 3 change. So, we had to tell TA in our PEAM's coding, how do we serve GT students in CSISD? So, in K through 12, we do have what we call the Full-Time Inclusion Service, and it's defined as receiving the majority of their core subjects with peers who are not identified as gifted learners. So, we don't have specific GT classes for GT kids. What we do have is we have classroom teachers who are trained by the 30 hours, the Level 1 GT training, plus a six-hour, you know, every-year update on addressing the needs of gifted learners. So, that is our Full-Time Inclusion Program, K through 12. But K through 6, we also have our enrichment But K through 6, we also have our enrichment specialists who are, so we double code, and they also have pull-out services, which, those are part-time services in a classroom other than their regular classrooms that take, take place on a regular basis. So, they're scheduled, it's not every day, you know, but they are regularly scheduled with enrichment specialists. And then in 7th through 8th, we do have that one GT STEM course that's coded gifted learners only. So, we do have that. So, that is what we reported to TA this year, that this is the first year we had to actually report that to TA. So, we're a full-time and pull-out service district. Now, when we're looking at our performance data, in 3rd through 8th grade, our goal is, if you, if you could kind of look at the data, our students do well in GT. Like, we have, well, we don't have 100% of all of them passing, but we're almost there. We're almost at 100% passing. What we have to keep in mind with our gifted learners is that some of our gifted learners, when they're identified, it's for reading, not math, or it's for math and not reading. So, because those, so we don't necessarily have gifted in science right now, even though MAP is going to be able to give us some science data to catch some of those gifted in, in science and either social studies. But our goal is to move these students to the next level. So, if a student was at approaches one year, the, the state is looking to make sure those gifted learners at least go to Meats the next year. And if they were in Meats, they're looking for them to at least go to Masters the next year. And if they're Masters, they need to maintain Masters. So, they are looking at individual student growth based on these results. So, our goal is to keep moving them up the, the, the scale. Now, AP is a way that we have previously measured growth for our gifted students at a secondary level, 9th through 12th. So, last year, we had 994 students taking AP classes, and 357 of those students, so about 1/3 of them are actually coded gifted students. It's about the same this year. I mean, there's just a little bit of a difference. We have 360 out of 950 that are currently enrolled. So, with House Bill 3 passing, we, when we look at our secondary numbers, right now, we have 702 identified gifted learners, 9th through 12th. We all know that when a lot of our students are gifted and talented identified, they're taking those pre-AP, AP courses before their junior and senior year. So, when we look at 702 identified, and only 360 are participating in these AP courses, we can't say that AP is meeting the needs of all of our gifted learners. So, with House Bill 3, we will be looking at our curriculum, and that's actually next. I'll talk secondary since I just left the AP. We are looking at that Advanced Instructional Differentiation into our content courses, our core content courses, to be able to meet the needs of our secondary gifted learners, because they're not all choosing to go the AP, pre-AP, advanced route. So, curriculum is one of our big needs right now, is to align that and make sure that we get all that in place with the passing of House Bill 3. And the same for elementary. Our enrichment specialists have already started participating in the curriculum writing process, but we do need to align what they do and pull out with our core content and make sure that it's all just advancing the performance of our gifted learners. Now, another challenge that we, that we have and that we have data to support is the identification of underrepresented GT groups. So, what we're doing for that right now, because we are noticing that the 11.6% of our identified gifted learners don't match our district demographics. So, with that in mind, we are reviewing our referral process, like really looking at how many, who's being referred, and we're looking at our matrix. So, the advantage of using MAP right now is that we can look at data really quick, and we could pick up some of those kids that maybe wouldn't have been otherwise referred. We're also looking at how to identify our twice-exceptional students, the ones that have this twice-exceptional needs. So, what I mean by this is those students who could be in a special education program, but also gifted, that would be considered a twice-exceptional, or are bilingual or English learners, are ELs, and also gifted. So, what can we do to make sure we're not missing those twice-exceptional needs students? So, that's what that, that indicates there. And then creative, the creatively gifted learner. So, right now, we have, I showed you the four things that we use. So, we're using academic, and then we use cognitive and parent and stu, and parent and teacher survey. But right now, we don't have a measure for that creatively gifted. So, we've heard about these amazing things that our students are doing in the performing arts. Gosh, today, perfect timing. Look at the awards that, that were presented, the recognitions that were presented. So, we are right now looking for ways to identify that creatively gifted student, to be able to identify them and help them reach their goals as well. So, we, we are in the discussion of that. We're, we're trying to figure out what other districts are doing and trying to find some good measures. So, what we will also be doing with our, another challenge is that differentiating for the gifted learner in the general settings, we're going to have to be looking at lesson plans to make sure that those differentiated activities are in there, and we're going to have to provide professional development to the teachers as well. And then documenting gifted students' growth based on how we're teaching, how this differentiated instruction is being delivered. So, a lot of progress monitoring. With House Bill 3, there's just a lot of changes to GT, a lot. So, we do have timelines for these changes. All of this curriculum stuff that I've been mentioning right now, we don't have to turn that around for August, thank goodness. We have till August of 2021, 2021. So, we have a little bit of time, but we can't wait. It's work that we will start immediately. And I believe that's it. Do you guys have any questions or comments?
So, I actually already got clarification on this, but I just want to make sure that it's understood. So, identifying the students, you mentioned the four areas, MAP, teacher, parent questionnaire, and the COG?
The COGAT, yes.
Yes, thank you. But it doesn't take all four of those, correct? It's any one of those that can, or it's the MAP, or it's the MAP that identifies first?
So, so we take the highest MAP. So, we actually use all four meas, all four measures are put into the matrix. Okay? So, we will take the highest MAP score. So, if it's in math, we take the math, science or re, well, science, starting in 3rd grade. So, we take the highest, and we put it on the matrix, and they could get from 1 to 4 points. So, depending on the percentile, the higher the percentile, the more points they get. So, honestly, in CSISD, like to get the full four points, you have to be in the 98th percentile or higher.
Okay.
Then, we take the COGAT score, and we put it into the matrix. Then, we take the parent rating and the teacher rating. So, it's all put into the matrix, and then we get the score, and then that's how we divide it and, and get the, the score.
Okay. That makes sense, but I think, I think what I was, what I'm more trying to get, and I'm not doing a very good job at it, is that students can be identified by their MAP score, or they can still be identified by their teacher or by their parent. Their parent can still request.
Definitely.
So, it's just a wider net to capture hopefully more students.
Exactly.
Okay.
Exactly.
So, it's not just relying on that MAP score?
No.
Okay.
We still have the referral process like we always have, and that's why we have the parent meeting in December saying, hey, this is what a gifter, gifted learner looks like. And we ask parents, do you see this in your child? Because if you do, please make sure that if the teacher hasn't referred him, you're referring him.
Right.
So, yes, that's, that's just one, one way for us to quickly look at data and go, wait, this kid's in the 98th percentile and not being served in the gifted program. We should look at this student.
Okay. And I like the, the creative side also. I like that you're going to start looking into that.
We're, it's, it's challenging, it's a challenging area to measure, but we are definitely looking into it and trying to find some good measures.
Oh, I like that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Comment and a couple of questions. I mean, I guess first off, it's another one of these, like you said, House Bill 3 items that really, I think, has some very good intentions, but is, it is creating some work and some effort, and a lot of it, it looks like. And I think, I mean, I think I'd heard already about having to differentiate, you know, in the, our 7th through 12th, and I think, I mean, that's not just, that's not necessarily an easy task. I don't know if you've gotten to the point yet where y'all figured out, is this going to be within the classroom, or are we going to have different classes? I mean, that's, I don't know.
We're not exactly there yet, but conversations are being held.
They're started, right. So, again, appreciate your, the work you are going to do for us ahead on that one. And then, just following up on the MAP question, I actually look at that as probably more of a positive that, you know, that every kid will be taking this test, and I, it'll be interesting to see if it really does help identify some of the underserved gifted kids that, that are out in our school. So, I look.
We're hoping, yes.
I hope so, too. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a question about the performance data. Could you go back to that slide? Yeah, that one. I'm curious, so I understand that you're reporting on, on our performance data, but do we have something to measure against? What is good? What is great? What are, what are the recommendations of where they should be in these percentages?
We don't. Like, do we have a state comparison or anything like that?
Correct.
We don't.
Okay.
Right.
Have we defined for ourselves?
We could, yeah. We could pull state and determine how we compare to them.
I'm just curious how we compare. What do we define? Where do we want to be? What's our goal for the Masters, you know, piece?
So, I don't, I don't know if, if we have a specific goal, like we want it to be 100% Masters, but what our goal is from the first time a student takes a star assessment, every year, they need to be showing growth, because we have to be showing that, because that's the way that they, they measure us, like, did the students move forward, or did they move back, or did they, that's?
That they're always progressing.
That they're always progressing.
Okay.
That's the intent of that.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Great.
Move forward.
Yes. We're not back. Oh, and one last question. Do we track at all historical data on where gifted and talented students after they leave the district, after they've graduated? Do we have any data to tie back to what they've done post?
I do not personally have that data.
I'm just curious if that's something we track.
I'm sure we could probably figure that out, but I don't have that data.
Just curious. Okay.
That is a great question.
Yeah.
Be interesting.
It would be.
Definitely. Yeah. Thank you.
Dr. Ramirez, thank you very much for your report.
Thank you, Marla.
Mrs. Martindale, I don't know where, you know, they always say where something starts and when it ends. I see House Bill started. I'm not quite for sure where it's going to end. It seems like it keeps on coming around.
Does kind of keep showing up, doesn't it?
Next item is J1, and we'll see if House Bill 3 is included in it. Mr. Martindale.
Actually, I believe we're on.
Oh, did I miss one?
H2, Mr. Schaefer.
H2, I'm sorry. Consider approval of updated board policy FDA local regarding opening participation for non-resident students for certain career tech programs only at College View High School.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Schaefer. Board members, you're aware, we spoke about this earlier at workshop. We've spoken about this a number of times at workshop throughout the last three or four months. This is revision to policy FDA local, which would allow non-resident students to participate in the Fire Science Academy program at College View High School. The update or revisions or noted changes to this policy are attached, and we will be looking for approval as presented so that we can move forward with allowing non-resident students to participate.
I think we, I don't know if there's any more discussions or questions from workshop, but if not, do we hear a motion to?
I'll make a motion to approve updated board policy FDA local as presented.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I will second.
Motion to second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any against? Motion carries 6-0. Now, Mr. Martindale, we will go to item J1. Am I correct?
Yes, sir, you are.
Consideration, consider approval of the purchase of updated computer workstations for CTE classes at A&amp;M Consolidated High School and College Station High School from Avinex in the amount of $102,500 per Education Service Center Region 6 Educational Purchasing Interlocal Cooperative, contract number 22.18, using Perkins Federal Grant Funds. Mr. Martindale.
Yes, sir. This is an effort by our CTE department, as well as our Technology Department. It's an annual purchase, an attempt to rotate older computers or workstations out of those So, it's a, it's, it's an annual process. On this particular purchase, we're looking at 25 computer workstations at each of our high schools, consolidated in CSHS. That purchase is available to us from Avinex for $102,500. That was the lowest quote we received, and that is available through our EPIC contract, and we would utilize Perkins Federal Grant Funds for this purchase. But this allows us to have a continuous replacement cycle for our computer workstations and our CTE classrooms at both high schools. So, we would be looking for approval on this purchase, pending any questions from the board.
It is my understanding on the Perkins funds, using those for a career in technology, that's giving the students more of a current, up-to-date technological?
Correct. Each year that he updates these machines, of course, our classes become more elaborate, the programs that they can run on the computers, so it demands more of the workstations, so we can utilize these particular funds, specifically if they are identified for, for Cape programs.
What happens to the existing workstations?
He cycles those out. David, what do you do with the oldest ones that we remove?
The reason I ask is, I mean, is there any credit, selling it, getting money back for it?
But what we usually do is we'll take these existing labs, and we'll move them down into some of the less CPU-intensive machines or laboratories. So, we constantly trickle them down, and after about five years, they have finally reached essentially end of life. And so, we then go to an auction, and they get whatever we can out of them, you know? It's usually not very much, because they're five to seven years old, but yes.
Okay.
And actually, following up on that, I actually heard some mumblings that with all the MAP testing, we might need more computers in some of the schools. I don't know if you've heard that same thing, so maybe we'll be keeping more of these for a while now.
Yes, we were, we are going to try to utilize as many as we can to maximize.
Just.
Yes, exactly.
Any further questions? Do I hear a motion besides crickets?
You don't.
I'll, I'll make a motion to consider approval or to make, to approve the purchase of updated computer workstations for CTE classrooms at A&amp;M Consolidated High School and College Station High School from Avinex in the amount of $102,500 per Education Service Center Region 6 Educational Purchasing Interlocal Cooperative, EPIC 6, contract 22.18, using Perkins Federal Grant Funds.
I'll second that.
Amazing motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously 6-0. Item J2, consider a ration, consider approval to award request for qualifications, number 20-001, Financial Advisory Services to Specialized Public Finance Incorporated. Mr. Martindale.
Thank you, Mr. Schaefer. Board members, the last time the district went through an RFQ process to identify a financial advisor was in 2015. That agreement was for five years, so it's time that we go through this process again. We prepared a request for qualifications and distributed and advertised that. In the fall, we had eight different institutions respond to that RFQ. We had district-level administration go through and score all of those submissions on it through an identified rubric, and from that, the institution that we're recommending that we award our RFQ to for Financial Advisory Services is Specialized Public Finance Incorporated. Of course, the Financial Advisory Services are really all things related to debt service, making projections in the out-years as far as INS projections and influence to cover our debt service payments, restructuring of debt, submission of, of those things to rating agencies and those types of things. So, it's time to go through this process again, and we're looking for approval and awarding this to Specialized Public Finance. this to Specialized Public Finance.
My general comment is, I appreciate you all being proactive, and I think going above and beyond looking at that. I think it just, it's good business, just so people don't get complacent with our contracts, and I appreciate you all looking at that.
The initial agreement was five years, and it does renew annually unless otherwise disclosed, so we just thought it was time to go ahead and go through the process again to, again, make sure that we are staying diligent with approving folks that take care of the district.
We appreciate you being so diligent on our funds. Do I, any other questions? Do I hear a motion?
I make a motion to consider approval to award request for qualifications 20001, Financial Advisory Services to Specialized Public Finance Incorporated.
I'll second.
A motion to second. Any further questions? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 6-0. At this point, I think we're going to L1, right? My alibi's working good. Before we go into executive session, I'd want to thank the Cabinet and Ms. Horn for all you do. I know there's a lot of moving around the boardroom between workshop and stuff, and y'all being prepared and having everybody on their toes to answer any questions we have, but I definitely want to thank you all for that. At this time, we're going to move to item L1. The board will meet in executive session to deliberate the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment of duties, discipline or dismissal of a public officer or employee. The executive session deliberations will be held pursuant to the personnel matters, closed meeting, exceptions to the Texas Open Meetings Act as set forth in Section 551.074 of the Texas Governmental Code. And we will come back, and if you're a government student, we might let you out early. Government students are, feel free to leave. It is 8:42 Tuesday, February 18th, and I call this meeting adjourned.